I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is six oh two. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Can you update us?
Yes, there were a handful of items in the table file this evening. There were some appointments and a change in assignment, some leaves of absences and a resignation.
Okay, if there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, all those, I'm sorry, I've misplaced my place here. All those in favor of... Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Thank you, Corey. Thanks for your help there. Second, thanks Jeff. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Apologize for that. And I do not think we have any public comment tonight, so we'll move on to item four, which is announcements and recognitions.
Yes, we have several announcements and recognitions this evening. First, hand-in-hand preschool, early ventures learning center and early childhood family education are gonna host an open house on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth at the Northfield Community Education Center from five forty-five to seven P M. This is an opportunity for families to tour the building, to see classrooms and to meet staff as they prepare for next year. We're also starting that time of the year where we talk about state tournament qualifiers. And so want to congratulate Andy Amundson and Micaiah Patrica, who recently qualified for the Nordic State Tournament, Nordic Ski State Tournament that will be held February twelfth and thirteenth at Giants Ridge Golf and Ski Resort in Bowabik, Minnesota. Moving to Alpine Ski, the Alpine Ski Team has recently competed in the conference and section races. The girls' team won the title for the third year in a row, and the boys finished in second place at the Big Nine Conference Championship at Mount Cato. And then at the Section Six Championship Race at Buck Hill, the girls' team finished in third place, and the boys' team finished in fourth place. And we want to congratulate the following racers Clara Wilson, Madison Lawrence, Bodie Balfour and Tommy Cahoon. They qualified to compete in the state Alpine competition on February eleventh at Giants Ridge. So congratulations to our skiers, you know, another tough winter for them without a lot of snow. In fact, I understand that the Nordic team has not skied on natural snow in over two seasons now. So congratulations to Coach Cardinal in that group, just another great season and to all the different competitors at the state tournament. Olympic Weightlifting hosted two hundred athletes at Northfield High School on Saturday, February first. And Steven Feig broke three state record or three school records, excuse me. He beat the snatch record at eighty-one kilograms, the clean and jerk record at a hundred one kilograms, and the total for all lifts at a hundred and eighty-two kilograms. Quite an event. If you've not ever been to the annual Olympic Weightlifting event at home, it's it is really just a sight to behold. Lots of activity, very interesting, some very strong people. So next year when they're here, I encourage you to attend. Northfield High School Raider Speech earned first place in the small school division at Rochester John Marshall High School last Saturday, contributing to the win. We're two category champions. We want to congratulate Elizabeth McCormick, who won the Great Speeches category, and Aki Gupta, who won in discussion. So again, congratulations to Raider Speech. And we now congratulate speech coach Jody Saxton-West. She had, if you remember, she had an award recently, and now she has another one. She was recently named the Outstanding Speech and Debate Educator for all of Minnesota. And so Jody has coached the Northfield Speech Team and judged competitions since two thousand and two. She's a legend in the speech community and we're so grateful to see Jody receive that statewide recognition. That is your, those are your announcements and recognitions for this evening.
So much. Board members, do you have any announcements or recognitions? Right, then we move on to items for discussion and reports. Item five, and first up, we have Arcadia and Prairie Creek Site Visits, presented by Director Darryl Keller, who visited the Prairie Creek Charter School the end of January. Welcome, Darryl.
Hello, thank you. So I am the ALC Director and other duties is assigned. One of those is the Charter School Authorizer's Lead and Team Lead. And so with that, I help Dr. Hillman compile all the reports that are needed from M D E and statutes, just making sure everything is being abided by. So one of the things that we do is an annual site visit as part of what I just mentioned. And so we go to both charter schools, the Prairie Creek Community School and Arcadia Charter School. So we did that back-to-back this year. And so on Thursday, we went to Prairie Creek Community School. And you'll see the focus of the visit is centered around four questions. And so before I get to that, I'll just read that little blurb. I won't read it word for word. But just in case you're unfamiliar with the whole authorizer process, so there's only two just school districts in the state that still authorize charter schools, Northfield and Shisago Lakes. And so it's a pretty unique situation for a district to authorize charter schools. And so basically, it's the connection between the state and the charter schools, making sure requirements and statutes are being met. And so the authorizers just ensure that's all being met. And so part of that is the legal and finance obligations that they have, but also these four questions help steer that work. So is the educational program a success? Is the organization efficient and well-run? Is the school meeting its legal obligations and are strategies in place for sustaining success and continuing to improve over the next charter term? So those are the four questions we go into these visits, focusing on and using that to focus our visit. And as we go through, you can see a little bit later in the report there, the kind of the schedule of the day. And so it's really a packed full day of meeting with parents, meeting with school, are the students, meeting with staff members and meeting with the finance team, meeting with the director, as many people as we can pack into that one day. And just with these four questions in mind as we go through. The first one, Prairie Creek, we met with Simon, who I believe I was here for the earlier annual report that he gave. So I'm not going to go over all the details that he already shared, but just to highlight the, is the program is the educational program a success? We refer to the M C A data, but also some of the other data that we gathered, such as their mission. So one of the things that's inspiring to me is, now this is the second year I've accompanied Dr. Hillman on this, the second year, it's just a commitment to the mission. So Prairie Creek has a strong commitment to that mission of being a progressive charter school. And when you talk to anyone in the organization, students, parents, staff members, everyone constantly refers to the mission of this is what, this is what's guiding our purpose. And so it's very inspiring that they are very committed to that mission of progressive education. And so as you see with the success, the data is supporting that what they're doing is working. The organization efficient and well-run, same kind of thing where I highlighted that commitment to mission as they use that as their guiding force for everything from financial decisions to staffing decisions to special staff development decisions. So everything is geared towards that mission statement. The legal obligations, as we went through, we met again with the finance team, we met with the director, we met with the staff themselves and all indications, we met with the special ed staff, all indications that they are meeting all their legal obligations. There was no findings of anything otherwise. And then the strategies to continue the success over the next charter's term. Simon talked to us about succession, not only with the director position, but all aspects of the program, just to continue that commitment to that mission as they move forward, whether that's through finance, whether that's through staffing, whether that's through the director, whatever that role is, just making sure that they stay committed to that mission statement. So Dr. Hillman, would you like me to go through both or would you like me to pause? Okay, all right. So that was Prairie Creek, that was on Thursday. And then on Friday, I went solo, flew solo, and same, same process, except just with a different charter school, different levels. So instead of elementary, this was middle school, high school at Arcadia. Same, same thing where we have the four questions of is a program educational success? And again, I highlighted some of the M C A scores that they have currently from Arcadia, but also the same thing of their mission, a little bit different, but similar in the in their way of progressive education is project-based learning at Arcadia. And so they are very committed to project-based learning. They have, over the years, tweaked that to incorporate some structured class activities in addition to their project-based learning. So we got to see some of both of those. I got to see some students that were doing project work time, they call it, so they're working on their projects. And also I visited quite a few classrooms in that visit, just to see their, the structured part of the day as well. So same as Prairie Creek, the M C A data is very strong. They do have a very impressive twenty-six average score in the A C T, which is coming up soon, compared to the nineteen point four average nationally. So that's all indicating strong success academically. Then we go into the organization efficient, well-run. Same thing, they, they are very efficient, very well-run. We talked to these, or I talked to the special ed staff, same thing going into the next one, they meeting all their legal obligations, meeting all the deadlines that are required. I talked to the finance department again. They, both programs Prairie Creek and Arcadia are in solid financial situations. And so both are pretty efficient with the small programs that they're running, making sure that there's no wasted resources. And they are continuing to keep that continuous improvement in mind. And so always challenging themselves with how can we do better, what can we do next? And so one of the things that the students really recognize is they really appreciate the smaller class sizes, the relationships with teachers, the flexibility in learning. And so all these indicate a very well-run program. The legal obligations are already mentioned, but just going a little bit further. So they also have no evidence that they are not meeting any of their legal obligations. So that's good news. And then for the continuous improvement, they are also working with staff, family engagement, trying to engage family members, trying to engage students as much as possible and continuing the leadership investment into the future. Any questions?
Thank you, Darryl.
Yeah.
Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, Ben.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you for going and Dr. Hillman, thanks for going. I know those are to me, important relationships to maintain. As you said, you know, there's, we're only one of two districts that has this type of relationship with charter schools in our district anymore. And you know, certainly that wasn't, didn't always used to be the case, but I think it's a time investment on behalf of the district, and I recognize that, both time and resource investment, but certainly one that I think is valuable. You know, we've got such a strong relationship with both of those schools and certainly a lot of those students end up in the district and we've had conversations about that. So I just wanted to thank you for taking this on and for spending the time and helping us maintain that relationship.
Yes, for sure.
Amy?
Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. First one is about the A C T scores. Do you know, did they have all of their students out of certain grade take the A C T or is it just select students?
So it is open to all eleventh graders. And so eleventh graders are the only grade that really can take it. Tenth graders are not, they can take the pre-A C T, but just the A C T is open to eleventh graders. I'm not a hundred percent sure on the number of the percentage of students that took it, so that I don't know. But the indications were that, well, it's legally, they're legally obligated to offer it to all eleventh grader students. So if you're an eleventh grader, you have to have it offered to you, whether or not they accept that or not is a different story. But so I did not, I did not know the exact number of students that took it.
Okay. And then my second question, might put you on the spot a little bit, but it's more philosophical.
Yep.
And I don't have, I'm not trying to steer you in one direction or another. I'm just curious, since we are kind of somewhat unique in being authorizers of charter schools, now that you've been through this process a couple of years, what do you see the district getting out of this as being the authorizers? Why is that advantageous to us?
So I am a little bit biased coming from an ALC perspective. So for me, my educational philosophy is very much school choice. And so one of the big benefits of the district is it offers that school choice, just another option for students that if there's another option that's not working for them, just another choice option that they do have. And having the district be part of that can just ensure that quality programming is going on there as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And if I can add to that, if that's okay. So having, you know, been part of the charter team for more than a decade now, I would agree. I think that in Northfield, you know, we have public school choice in our DNA. You know, this goes back decades. And so that public school choice within our community, I think, is just part of what Northfield expects. And I also think that we have learned things about how Prairie Creek and Arcadia do things that we have been able to bring back. One example, years ago, we were part of something that was called Lesson Study. So Lesson Study is a Japanese educational approach where a series of educators, you know, create a lesson. One of the people who helped create the lesson delivers it. The others and other community people, St. Olaf professors, Carlton professors, myself, I was involved in it. Parents have a chance to go and then observe the lesson and then debrief afterwards. And so that's something that we had in the back of our mind for several years, and we're now actually executing something very similar with the implementation of our mathematics curriculum, something that's called Teacher Lab Days, where teachers are going and seeing their colleagues deliver a similar lesson to what they have done. So I think that that's another example of how we have taken some of their ideas. I think the other thing that Val and I are always looking at is that the two charter schools operate on very thin margin. If you think a hundred and eighty students, a hundred and twenty-eight, they have to have higher fund balances because the loss of just a few students makes a big difference for them. So over the years, we have looked at some of the strategies that they use, and we have attempted to, or we are continuing to attempt to adapt some of those things to some of our fiscal practices. And it goes both ways. We have quarterly meetings with the charter school directors and we get a lot of good ideas from them as well. So I think there's just a few additional things I'd like to share, Amy, based on your question. It's mutually beneficial.
Corey?
And Dr. Hillman kind of led into a question I had, and I have it for you, Darryl. So thanks for being here. As you've gotten more involved with the oversight of the charter schools, particularly with Arcadia, what lessons or community approaches or relationship-building pieces have you taken from your experience with them to apply at the ALC, which you've been at for a number of years?
Yeah.
Just bring a fresh perspective. What have you learned?
Yep. So the, the part that was refreshing to me is was teacher many, many moons ago. And one of those things that I experimented with was project-based learning. And so I did some research, I implemented that in my classroom. And so now years later, I was quite curious about how that translates to current. And so I was very much looking at the project-based learning model that they have at Arcadia, how they're using it, how are they implementing it and plan to bring that. I do have some ALC teachers that are interested in exploring that option, not to the degree that Arcadia is, but exploring that option a little bit further in their own classrooms. And so I can bring some of that experience because they have worked through some of those kinks over the years that we can bring that knowledge of what they've learned to the ALC as well. Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board members question or comment? Okay, Ben?
Okay, you'll have to indulge me for a moment because I just wanted to kind of tag on to what Dr. Hillman said, you know. And I think when we look back historically, Minnesota was actually the first state that authorized charter schools back in the early nineties. So the concept was very much sort of built on that idea of how do we create a space that's, you know, outside of sort of traditional school district to ideate on sort of, you know, innovative educational approaches and things along those lines. Obviously, kind of taken off nationally and changed in terms of, you know, what charter schools look like now, some thirty-two, thirty-three years later. But, you know, I've had the privilege of being the board chair at Prairie Creek for a number of years. And I can say that, you know, the relationship that we had with the district really was important. You know, Northfield's a very relational community, right? And so the fact that we knew that the district supported the work of the school and, you know, just those teachers live in the community, they interact with other teachers in the community, you know, I think it just helps create that collaborative environment where we see, you know, really working together rather than having either an adversarial relationship, which I would never want, but or just want of sort of passivity. So again, I really appreciate the fact that the district and this board supports being the authorizer for both those schools. I think it really does make a significant difference.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, thank you, Darryl. We appreciate your work and effort.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have item B, and I'll introduce item C as well. Item B is the proposed two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six operating capital and long-term, long-term facilities maintenance budget. And Director of Finance Val Murdestorff will present. And Director of Buildings and Grounds Justin Roble will be available for questions. Item C is the long-term facilities maintenance tenure and indoor air quality management plan. The board will be asked to approve that plan, including the air quality management component at the next board meeting. And it will be, the plan must be submitted to the Department of Education. Welcome, Val.
Thank you. So I'm going to go through the operating capital and long-term facility maintenance budget. And at the end of that is the L T F M tenure plan. And Justin is here to answer any detailed questions that I can't answer and to talk about the indoor air quality plan. So operating capital and long-term facility maintenance is really our funds that are allowed to buy equipment and some of the larger purchases are curriculum and things. And then the L T F M is really intended to maintain our facilities. So we can repair, replace, but we can't do something new or use it to change the intent of a room and that sort of thing. So I've included some pictures throughout the presentation of just different things we've used the funds for. So we resurfaced the middle school pool. That was one of the items on our L T F M plan last year. So again, strategic plan, you guys are all well aware of this, but stewardship is not just about the finances. It's also about our facility. And so we want to make sure that we're looking at all those components when we're talking through these. Not even going to guess what the picture is. It looks like a brand-new doorway, but those are some of the things we're working on. So capital is made up of a couple different revenue streams. And so operating capital is one of the formulas that is a mix of both local levy and state aid. Lease levy is specific for certain leases that we have. So for example, we use our lease for our partnership with the Cannon Valley Special Ed Co-op, our ice arena time, our Dantastone time, those sorts of things are eligible for that. And then the capital levy is the voter-approved capital projects levy that was increased in two thousand and twenty-two. So this current fiscal year that we're in was the first year of that increase. And so we'll see how that plays out once we get to the revenue part of that. And then long-term facility maintenance was implemented in two thousand and seventeen, I believe, where they combined a couple different formulas into one. And so we're generating about three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil unit. There's some other things in that formula that aren't exciting, but all of those formulas come together. They are all part of the general fund budget, and so they'll be included when I present that. But we do this ahead of time and ask for approval to allow the district to go out and get bids and quotes and secure contractors and things for any projects we have coming because the summer months are pretty tight for school districts to get work done. And so we want to make sure we're ahead of the game and not getting higher pricing and less optimal scheduling and those sorts of things. And then all of these are very restrictive. So there's revenue that comes in and the state has statute that says, here's what you can and cannot pay for with each of these funding streams. So they have their own fund balance codes. So the revenue that comes in has to be spent on those items and we can't mix and mingle with the other general fund dollars. And then we've done this process, I want to say every year since I've been here. But once we do the operating capital budget, there's typically some things that come off the top, like the lease levy. Obviously, those expenditures for the leases are going off on the expenditures. And then whatever's remaining, to make sure we're, we're meeting the fund balance minimums, is our leadership team comes together and basically prioritizes. So all the different needs come across, and then we go through and prioritize and come to consensus as a team. So it's a good way for everybody to see the needs across the whole system rather than just their own individual things and programs. So this is the new, since we reversed the traffic flow at Bridgewater, this is the new sign that was added along Highway two forty-six. And then we also added lighting. If you ever had to drive there, it was very dark at night and in the winter. So now there's lighting to make sure that it's obvious that this is the entrance now. So total revenue is just shy of five million, so about four point nine million dollars. Operating capital is just over a million of that. Lease levy is four hundred and fifty-one thousand. The capital levy is a little over two million. That's about two hundred thousand dollars higher than it was last year. And again, that levy is a percent of our taxable market value. That's how the the language read, and that's how this particular statute reads. And so as our taxable market value grows across the district, that revenue source will grow with it. And so that was one of the items that we were intentional to make sure that we can still continue to buy the technology equipment and all of the things as things get more expensive in the future, rather than locking in that dollar amount. And then the L T F M is about one point three million. So you can see the, the largest piece is the voter-approved capital projects levy. And I'm sure I've said it several times, but we are very blessed in this community to have a supportive voters. So this chart shows you kind of the last two years of audit results, so what actually happened, what our current revised budget is projecting, and then what we're projecting for two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. So you can see in the two thousand and forty-four, twenty-five, that was the, the big jump from the seven hundred and fifty thousand to the one point nine for the voter-approved increase for the capital projects levy. That's allowing us to pay for all of the technology staff salaries. That was one of the operational savings in the general fund. They're the only salaries that can be paid for with this funding. That was one of the items, as well as some curriculum and other things that we're doing with that. And then the, I want to highlight the sale of equipment and E-rate that can flux from year to year. E-rate in particular is kind of a trailing funding source where we get approval upfront and then have to pay for it. And then they reimburse us twelve to thirty-six months later when they feel like it. And so you can see those kind of come and go. The big one for two thousand and thirty-three, twenty-four was the actual sale of our iPads. So we have our iPad lease and our teacher laptop lease on two-year, they're on four-year cycles, offset by two years. So every other year, we have a lease coming up where we will pay it off, own the devices, and then we resell them. So in two thousand and thirty-three, twenty-four, that I want to say was just over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we got for the iPads. And so I have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted because we'll have our laptops be done and renewing that lease. Again, that's an estimate. We don't know on, when we solicit quotes, what that'll look like, but it's typically been a relatively good sale. They're usually in good working condition and that sort of thing. But it depends on the market at the time when we sell them. Also, the increase in operating capital, you can see that had been very steady, about seven hundred and fifty thousand is now nine hundred and eighteen. That is directly related to, we paid off the Spring Creek Edition. So that had been a lease purchase agreement. So it wasn't voter-approved debt. We basically sort of had a loan from a bank and then used our operating capital money to pay it off over fifteen years, I think. And so that is fully paid off now. And so those funds are now no longer kind of taken off the top out of our revenue. Some of the technology updates. Some of the technology updates. These things don't look huge, but they're very expensive. So a new main network switch. I had to ask for specific details, so I could type what they were, because I was not sure what I was looking at when I requested pictures for the presentation. A new middle school switch, and then we updated the computers and the middle school lab. So those are some of the things that these funds allow us to do. So expenditures, again, mostly status quo things are in similar places. That second line on the lease purchase agreement, you can see, went from 212 to 132 to 69. It's a semi-annual payment. So for 24-25, we had one payment remaining. And then in 25-26, there's no longer that payment. The $69,000 remaining is our lease purchase for the district shop in Dundas. So that will continue for a few years still. The building and program allocation is a direct allocation based on student account, student count that the buildings have access to, to determine needs specifically in their building. It's a smaller dollar amount, so we're not talking large things. But if they want to buy a bookshelf or, you know, anything for their building that they think is necessary, they can choose how to use that allocation. Textbooks and digital curriculum is managed by our Instructional Services Department. That, again, was one of the areas that we were intentional about with the voters with the increase in the Capital Projects Levy. So you can see that increasing next year. There are several very large areas that are under review. English Language Arts 612 and adapting curriculum for for an entire grade span like that for those departments is pretty expensive. And so we're making sure we're planning ahead for that, to have enough resources to implement that effectively. Technology leases, again, this is our student iPad lease, our staff laptop lease. And then included in this is now the software for Arctic Wolf is the name of it. And that is our kind of cyber liability security software that they are monitoring our network and all of our devices 24/7. So that's included in that as well. Network administration, again, is the cost for all of the technician salaries. Again, the only salaries allowed in statute to be in this budget. And then the Capital Committee recommendations, I alluded to that earlier. That's the amount remaining for everyone to come together and determine what, what needs are really going to take priority each year. So you can see the voter-approved increase has substantially increased what we're able to do and allow for buildings to have access to. And then long-term facility maintenance, again, that can flux from year to year, depending on the projects that we have going on, but planning for about 1.3 million. We try hard to keep that one in check, so we're not spending more than we're bringing in unless we're intentionally building that fund balance for a larger project. So I think I hit all the, I'm just reading my notes on there to make sure I didn't miss anything. The long-term facility maintenance, not surprisingly, the Department of Ed directs the buckets in which, and how we code things. And so these are the categories that are allowable for long-term facility maintenance revenue. The top six are what the Department of Education classifies as health and safety. So we had a health and safety revenue stream before, and that was kind of folded in with the new LTFM calculation. And those include a lot of just ongoing elevator inspections, basketball hoop inspections, all the kind of things that we're required to do annually. The physical hazard increase, I just want to highlight that, because that's a pretty big jump. That is our, we're planning to do, replace the Spring Creek playground, which I'll talk about in a second, but that is a port-in-place. So it's accessible for students with disabilities. And so similar to what we have at NCEC, if you've seen that playground in that surface. So rather than replacing mulch every year, it's a port-in-place that is more accessible for students. And then the rest below the first six are just the other categories. So building envelope is things like tuck pointing, those sorts of things. And then this is kind of the bigger projects. There's a bunch of little things that we're doing as well. But for capital specifically, we're intending to remove about seven out of eight of the locker bays in the middle school and opening that up to create more flex learning spaces. The new playground at Spring Creek, partially funded with capital, partially funded with some PTO dollars. And again, the port-in-place is actually LTFM, because we're replacing the surface. But the new playground is not eligible for LTFM, even though we're replacing it. New transit van, new front loader. Fun fact, our front loader is like 32 years old. That is what we use to do our own snow removal. And so we're actually doing a lease-to-own, so it'll be an annual lease payment, because those are incredibly expensive as well. New high school media center computers, some additional storage at NCEC. They are lacking storage, so we have a plan for that. And then adding a window in the infant room, I believe. For LTFM, tuck pointing at Bridgewater, and then this building as well. We're refinishing the NCEC gym floor, some blind replacement, pavement repair, probably in several places across the district. We have an annual allocation for painting, so it's not necessarily specified for a specific building yet, but we have to do painting every summer. And then replacing the gym doors at Bridgewater. So that's just a flavor of kind of the major things that'll be going on for 25-26. And when you pull that all together, this is what it looks like. So about $4.9 million projected for revenue, 4.6 in expenditures. Operating capital, fund balance, planning to end around $367,000. LTFM at about $814,000. Our goal, our minimum goal for operating capital is to maintain $200,000 or more. And our goal for LTFM is to maintain $600,000 or more. Again, we had been under on operating capital. And so that was an intentional build back, which we knew we'd be able to do with the increased Capital Projects Levy. LTFM, we are building intentionally, just because we know we've got a lot of things coming with the high school, and if there's ways we can use to support that. And in addition, there's just some other larger things that we want to make sure we have enough cover for coming up. We've been looking at remodeling the ALC. That is one of the last places in the district to get touched. And so making sure we have enough resources to support those updates as well in the coming years. So the tenure plan is a requirement by the Department of Ed as part of the long-term facility maintenance plan. The forms for this don't come out until June, and we don't submit them till July. And it has not made sense to talk about it now, come back and talk it about again in July. So we've kind of consolidated it. I take the numbers and transfer them to the forms in July and submit them to MDE. And so this is what it looks like. Obviously, once we get five years out, the expenditures are kind of dwindling. We have much less confidence in what we're doing five years from now than we do in the next three years. But a lot of them are placeholders for things like painting and annual inspections and things that we know are going to happen. And then making sure that we're, have some of the bigger items. We also did use some of our LTFM funding to have WOLD come in this past year and do a full facility analysis on all of our other buildings. We had had it on the high school already as part of that plan and progress we were doing. And so now we have one on every building. And so we're going to be able to pull that into a much more comprehensive tenure plan is our goal for that, to make sure that we have some really nitty-gritty detail on all of our systems, expected life dates, all that good stuff. And so we're going to kind of combine those and make sure we have a good plan moving forward. So the next item on your agenda, that's also one of the Buildings and Grounds trucks that we purchased with capital, in case you were wondering why there's a random picture of a truck. The indoor air quality is also part of the tenure plan. So I'm going to have Justin come up and talk a little bit about that. And we're going to kind of check off two of your agenda items here at the same time. And then we will take questions about the budget, the tenure plan, or the indoor air quality at that time.
Good evening. Justin Robbely, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Going into the indoor air quality, it starts with a survey. The district sends out a survey through IEA is who manages it for us. That goes out to all the employees. They get a chance to respond to known issues that they see in their rooms, because there's a lot of rooms in the district. So the people that spend all day in those rooms, in those spaces, point us in the direction where they think there's problems. And annually, it gives us something to work through. And I think the report, again, this year was like the other ones that I've seen, where minor issues, but just things that we have to take care of throughout the district. And it's one of the line items that we use for LTFM expenditures.
All right. Any questions? Thank you so much. Board members, do you have a question or a comment at this time? Amy?
So just to be clear, there's really no changes in the air quality from last year to this year, so.
Yep, much the same.
That makes it easy, because we've heard this year after year, so less to worry about. I do have a more general question for both of you. With our exciting reimagined Northfield High School project coming along, how does that affect how you look at LTFM? And obviously, we're not going to want to invest in the parts of the building we're going to be tearing down, but I just want to know sort of how you look at it, because there probably will be things that need to be fixed, and what do you do?
Yeah, we will definitely keep up on maintenance while the building in the space is occupied and trying to maximize what investments we do make that are critical. And we'll always keep the space, like you say, the best we can make it with, for what the space is. Moving forward, it'll just, the nice thing is the high school has taken, put a lot of pressure on the LTFM and the maintenance and what it takes to keep what my district staff or the district maintenance staff, the time that they allocate to the building. It'll be nice to be able to spread that around, because the other buildings, they all need attention. And yeah, it's what we need to do.
Anyone else question or comment?
Can I just add to one comment to that? The other benefit to having WOLD do the facility study is they have everything documented, and they also will have all the documentation of everything new and updated that goes into it. And so they'll be able to kind of merge that into a updated facility analysis document, so that we'll have, again, an updated, comprehensive plan. But we've been very intentional the last several years to make sure that we're balancing, keeping the high school up to date and maintained without making investments in it that, long-term, maybe didn't make sense.
One more?
One more, okay.
So I was just wondering, when you list a new transit van and a new front loader, are they new or are they new to us?
Yes, they will both, they will be, they will both be new to the district.
And brand new?
Yep, and, and brand new.
Thank you.
All right, Ben?
Did you kick the tires? Quick, so I think I know the answer, but the WOLD assessment then doesn't, those numbers or the projections for things that they've identified aren't currently included in those estimates, the tenure estimates for the LTFM that you showed us were correct?
No.
Yeah, so then when does that get built in?
Over the next year. So we just got those reports not that long ago. And so we'll be taking some time to make sure we are melding kind of our internal document with their much more comprehensive one.
What we knew needed to be fixed versus what they're recommending in that timeline? Makes sense. It's good to know, though, that they've gone through and done. Do they give you some guesstimates as to sort of cost then for some of those items too, or is that?
Yep, they have the kind of current replacement costs, and then they have a tool in their worksheet that allows for, as it progresses out years, if we move it, it'll add a inflationary factor.
Okay. Then, Justin, quick question for you on the indoor air piece, the ventilation assessment side of it. Does, this is under MDH, right? Is there a requirement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do they specify, you know, like MERV filtration levels or air exchange per hour for?
Yes, all new, all new construction meets a different criteria than what, you know, would be much like Bridgewater and the middle school. I do not know the MERV numbers right offhand and how many cubic feet per minute air exchange needs to happen. But the high school is the one school that is not, does not, is not compliant to current standards.
And I assume that'll be, I mean, obviously part of the?
Absolutely.
You know, we understand the benefits of good filtration and air exchange, have recent experience. Just leave it at that, so, okay.
Okay, anyone else question or comment? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. I would be interested to know, I mean, out of our fleet of cars, period, and trucks, have we used a strategy over the years, or even now, on that brand-new one, that brand-new truck, new versus leasing or buying a 10-year-old or whatever? What has typically been and is the strategy of the school district for, you know, purchasing vehicles? Because is that just brand-new? Did you lease on it, or is it paid up with the district? Or what's the status of how that's paid for?
Yep, so we do purchase, and the two new, the two trucks that we purchased last year, they're new. And historically, we've kept trucks well past their appreciation. So the trucks that they replaced, they were both more than 20 years old. And those are the vehicles that the grounds crew is relying on. You know, the bigger thing is relying on keeping the schools open for snow plowing.
Okay, so you're basically buying new, and then you're going to work a depreciation schedule on it and then make a decision later on? To how long you hang out of the truck, so.
Yeah, so typically for vehicles, we purchase it outright. And then obviously depreciate it and use it as long as we can. And again, as long as it works. We've upgraded the snowplow attachment and those sorts of things. But with the vehicles and the expense, it has made sense in the capital budget to do that. I don't know that we've analyzed recently leasing those versus not. We do a lot of our own in-house repairs. We have some very talented crew members. For the front loader, that's like a $250,000 piece of equipment, which would have eaten up a significant portion of the budget. And so that made more sense to do a lease, a lease option, just because of the upfront cost, if that makes sense. So that's kind of how we balance it. We're analyzing right now for the driver's ed car if we should lease or buy. So, is that helpful?
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Yeah.
We have some vehicles, though, that we have purchased used. Like if I'm remembering, the bucket truck. And there are, there are a handful of vehicles in the fleet where we seek a used vehicle that's in good condition. So can you just walk through that?
Yeah, we do have, the district has a small dump truck. And that was a vehicle that, the cost threshold for what we use it for, that was a used vehicle purchase. But, and that will be something we say we will probably use for 20 years also, but it does not get the day-to-day use that, that our trucks do. That, like you say, the outright purchase new, the value is there in the duration that we keep them and the maintenance that's done by our, by the grounds crew. It makes sense to keep, buy a new truck. We know what the truck is. We keep it long enough to justify it.
Very good. Okay, Maggie?
Can you talk a little bit about how these budgets relate to the budgets that are kind of subject to the reduction conversations? And does declining enrollment affect these budgets?
Sure. So I'm gonna, can you switch back to my presentation, just for a quick minute? Thank you. I'm going to go back to this revenue one. So in terms of the budget process, these are all considered restricted funds. So they are not included in what we are, the unrestricted general fund is what we're talking about with the budget reduction process. And so these have revenue that comes in, expenditures can only be spent. They have their own fund balance code, and so they're. their own fund balance code and so they're, they're excluded from that because we can't do anything outside of that. In terms of enrollment, with the exception, the capital projects levy is obviously a percentage of our market value and so that is not enrollment driven. Lease levy is a product of our actual leases, but long-term facility maintenance and operating capital are enrollment-based formulas. So LTFM is $380 per pupil and then it is prorated depending on your average building age. So as long as your average building age is over 35, you're getting 100% of the 380, otherwise it's prorated. We are currently getting over, where we're getting 100% of it. And then operating capital is also a per pupil and there's another complex part of the formula that's in there as well, but they can, so we're seeing like a little bit less each year if they're not adjusting the formula in some other way. The 380 has been set and statute since 2019, I want to say. And so that just gets, I mean, you can see it went from 1401 to 1318 across those four years. There's other things that can play into that calculation as well, but on par to not go into the weeds in your question, yes, those two are related to enrollment and they are not part of the, the budget reduction process. Is that helpful? Okay.
Anyone else question or comment? All right, thank you, Justin. Thank you Val.
Thank you.
Item D is our priority-based budget reduction process, an update on the upcoming priority-based budget reduction process that was described at our regular meeting January 27. Okay, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and I'll ask Val to help me with this as needed. So just want to keep this conversation in front of the board and of course, in front of the people who are here tonight and watching on the live stream. So we just, we know that as we progress over the next several months, that people arrive at this conversation about our budget at different times. So I ask for the board's forgiveness ahead of time that I'm going to start by briefly grounding us in why where we're at. This is going to be a standard feature because again, people find out about this at different times, we want to make sure everybody's operating from the same perspective. And then I will then highlight the upcoming meetings that we have for the community committee, which we have nearly 60 people who have signed up to help us. It's going to be over 60 with the district youth council, six students who have volunteered to assist us. So we have a lot of community support in trying to think about how do we navigate this as we move ahead. So I'm just going to show you a few things that we have in the, the report that I gave you in the packet. And in the packet, for people who are looking at this, we've given the links to the financial forecast that Director Murdestoff did at the last meeting, the narrative, the interview that I did on KYMRN Radio after the last meeting, and there was a special one that I did as well, just to help the community understand budget. It's also important for people to know that we are not alone in this, that at least half of the state is going to be doing these budget kind of reductions. This year MSBA has done the survey and about half of the school districts in the state will be reducing this year and I would perceive that next year it will be similar. So you see all of those links, you see the links to the articles that I've provided from the Star Tribune and Care 11. We know about declining enrollment and so we know that this is not a mass exodus from the district. We know it is incremental declining enrollment, projected to be at 0.93% per year over the next several years. There are two new pieces of information I want to share tonight as we continue to dive deeply under the hood of the enrollment projections. One is related to the charter schools. And so Prairie Creek has had 180 students for as long as they opened up that addition, well more than a decade now. So we don't have a whole group of new students choosing Prairie Creek. But Director of Prairie Creek, Simon Tyler, gave me the breakdown of where do Prairie Creek students come from? And I think this is important for the community to hear. So of those 180 students, over the last six years, we've seen a decline in the share of those students who are Northfield School District residents. So six years ago in 2020, 21, they, we were seeing around 80% of their 180 students be Northfield School District residents. This past year, we see 67%, a little more than 67%. So while Prairie Creek continues to have the same number of students, the share of their students who are Northfield District residents is smaller. That could be a combination of the lower birth rates that we've talked about and it is also that people from adjacent school districts are choosing that charter school. We've also seen over that same time period, St. Dominic's School, our beloved local parochial school, has seen 26 fewer students over that same time period. I share this only to provide context for the entire community's enrollment projections. So we've included the enrollment projections, there again, 12% fewer births in Rice County over the last six years. We know about the housing issue with 28 single-family homes for sale over the 178 square mile school district. The second piece that we are looking at is the unfunded and state and federal mandates. And so just gave you a few pieces of data there. Again, we're not making a value judgment on the mandates, we're simply saying what they cost our budget. And of course, Val has reviewed these, the state summer unemployment program for hourly workers, that's around $217,000 should the legislature not pick that up again this coming year. The payroll tax that is coming for the state required family medical leave program, we're anticipating that to be about $174,000 of general fund money. The TRA increase, we're anticipating to be at about $225,000. And then as Val shared, we learned just last week that the state doesn't have enough money to cover the entire special education cross subsidy reimbursement that they had passed. So they're prorating it to 95%. That's around $525,000 of less revenue that we anticipated. So we have declining enrollment due to lower birth rate and a smaller housing inventory. We have a number of mandates, including the special education piece that we've talked about before and these other state programs. And of course, the big piece that now that the legislature is fully back in session, this is the chart that we show you regularly about the per pupil basic formula. The blue line is the, what the formula would have been had it just kept up with inflation. The red dotted line is what it actually is. And if the state were to correct, so we had the buying power that the formula had in 2003, that'd be another $1,364 per pupil, $5.7 million in revenue force, which coincidentally is just about the reduction that we're talking about. So what we would encourage people, if you really want to make your voice heard in St. Paul, the best thing that would be, that lifts all boats is to increase the per pupil basic formula. So we ask you to reach out to your legislators and say, in this first year of the biennium, when they set the budget, this is the time where we think we should see at least another 3% increase in addition to the inflationary increase that is in statute. The ongoing inflationary pressures, everyone who's watching this knows about the cost of eggs and all of those kinds of things. Property liability insurance, just by one example, increased by 26% over this last year. And again, we just think it's also really important to share with the community that it's very natural, after we've passed a bond reform, overwhelmingly passed a bond reform in November, that people then conflate bonding with operation. And in Minnesota, one of the most regulated school funding systems in the country, never shall the two meet. And the fixes at the high school, the improvements, the new construction, will improve the operational efficiency of that building and we will see less operational costs there. So the bonding project will have a positive impact on our operating budget after those projects are completed. But it's just important to remember that there are different buckets and this bucket, the bonding bucket, can never come over and impact or we can't use that money in the operational budget. So we know that people know that bonds are for building and levies are for learning, but we need to make sure we continue to educate our friends and neighbors about that. And it's short-term and long-term. The bond reform is looking to set us up for the long-term, right? And the budget issue that we're talking about right now is about the short-term financial stress that we're experiencing. So we have several community-based budget or community priority-based budget reduction team meetings. They're Tuesday nights for the next three weeks. Our first is tomorrow night, another one on February 18th, the final one on February 25th. Again, we have more than 60 people who will participate in those six different teams. We are asking people to make sure that they come with an open mind, that they're willing to work productively and respectfully with others, that they're willing to put, put out their ideas about where they think we should consider reducing the budget and making sure that they're providing feedback about those recommendations. You can see the teams here and what those anticipated budget reduction targets are. There are five different teams. Those budgets are generally prorated to the amount that they take of the typical expenditure budget. Special services is slightly different. Special education's required to meet maintenance of effort. That means that this year, we have to spend at least one more penny on special education than we did last year. So special education, special services, which is special education, EL, title, health services, there's no way that they could meet their prorated target because of the maintenance of effort requirement. So Val and Sarah Pratt have looked at what they think a reasonable budget target is and then that remaining $700,000 that would have been part of the special services target was redistributed to the other budget teams to be able to hit the $6 million target. And so you see those teams there. Also want to remind people that on March 11th, we'll have a community meeting in which the entire community would have the opportunity to come in here. What are the proposed reductions? What would those impacts be? We'll have a breakout opportunity for people to go, one board member per room. People from the community can share what they think about those proposed reductions. And then after that, they'll have an opportunity for a public comment style opportunity for, if they need to share with the entire audience what their perspective is. You would then hear the next version of those reduction proposals at the April 14th meeting and then we'd ask you to act on the final budget targets at the April 28th meeting. This is not great news, right? We have some very difficult decisions ahead of us. And I think the key part is we are operating from a place of fiscal strength. We have $8 million in the bank. We are responsible, which is why we are making these reductions to solidify the stability of the district. We have the responsibility to serve the students who are here now, but we also have the responsibility to serve the students who will be here five years from now and 10 years from now. And that's that short-term and long-term plan that we always do. So we wanted to make sure that we had this in front of you. I'd ask Val if there's anything else she would like to add. Otherwise, we're just grateful for the people in the community who are stepping forward and for the hard work that you're going to do in the next few months. So that is the report. We just want to keep this in front of people and I understand that some of this is repetitive for board members and I appreciate your understanding as we know people come to this conversation at different times.
Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Any questions or comments? Okay, Corey?
Thanks Claudia. Dr. Hillman, you touched on this, but I'm going to ask Val to maybe explain a little bit further. Can you share how you calculate the team budget targets? Some of them are to the dollar, so I'm assuming there's formulas involved, but without getting too nitty-gritty, can you share a little bit more about how those numbers came to be?
Sure. So the budget is basically downloaded and then I take out anything that's restricted and then I separated all the different programs. So all the elementary codes, all the secondary, special services, and whatever that tallied. In theory, you take the 6 million and just do it prorata. With the special services, like Dr. Hillman indicated, we had to limit that one and so then basically the rest is just redistributed also prorata. Does that answer your question? Okay. Yep.
Maggie, did you have a question?
I've had some people or heard some, you know, people wondering if the board is already coming to this with our own ideas of what to reduce. Could you just outline what the board's role is and kind of where we come into the committee's work and when that will happen?
That's an excellent question. Thanks Maggie for asking it. And I think that that's an important piece to have, you know, the, the board's plan is to include the community. And so we are using a tried and true process that Northfield Public Schools have used for budget reductions over the last 20 years. This program or priority-based budgeting process has been used four or five times over that timeframe and the board stays at the governance level. So as you know, the board is not giving at this point direct feedback about what you think may be reduced. You are saying to the community, we want to bring a cross-section of people together, bubble ideas at the community committee level. When the community members share ideas during these three meetings, administrator's jobs is to, our jobs are to take those ideas and activate them into what would a reduction look like? So when the community says, we think that this is an area that we should look at, our administrative team who has the direct knowledge of how to activate that, takes that and creates those into budget recommendations. The board then gets to, you'll get reports, right, as we go along? And then you really have a chance to hear that ahead of the March 11th meeting with the rest of the community. You're listening to people as time goes on and then when the, when the recommendations come to you, you will have an opportunity to say as the final arbiters, we thank the community for this work. I will tell you that the history of this board over the last two decades has been the vast majority of recommendations from the community committee have been approved by the board. But the board has also had what I would, you know, you'd call line item veto ability, where the board can say, we really appreciate people's thoughts around this one, but we really want to take this particular recommendation and not move it forward. So the board is working at that governance level, allowing the administrators to cultivate the ideas from the community and the staff, bubble it to the top and then you get a final product to be able to make the determination. Even as we as administrators who really see the big picture of the district, we resist from giving specific ideas to the committee because we want people to look at things through some different eyes. We will give a little bit more guidance this time with some examples, just because that's something that we've learned in the past. We are, they certainly aren't recommendations from administration, but they are examples of the kinds of things that committees could consider.
Thanks Claudia. Dr. Hillman, I have a few questions. One is, so you just mentioned just now that you're, I mean, you're not going to give out details of what these budget reduction teams can or should reduce. So can you just maybe go through and run down the information that will be furnished to them? And I mean, is it going to be, you know, expense areas kind of line by line or are they, and so maybe just mention the items that you will furnish to them and then maybe what's going to be left out?
I'm going to ask Val to talk about the budget packages. She has been preparing that for the committee, so she's the best person to answer the question.
Absolutely. So the budget packages have a summary tab that lists all of the priorities from the last process, kind of as our grounding to make sure that we're still aware of that, make sure that the committees are aware that that was part of the process. And then all of the data is summarized. And so for the secondary package, for example, is the one I happen to have open, it breaks out high school, the middle school, the ALC by what's restricted and unrestricted. So even operating capital and LTFM pulled out, there are still items in the budget that are restricted because they have some specific state guidance or just so there's an awareness that it's not that it's off the table, but it might have some other further conversations so that we're just aware of that. And then it's broken out into the total personnel and non-salary and then whatever the grand total is. So that's at a summary level. There's also a tab that gives the line item detail. That is more for our administrators to answer questions as things come up. And then it also includes all of the FTE analysis. So no names attached, but positions, you know, hours per week or hours per day, hours per week, days per year. So they have all of that for every position that's included in the budget as well. Activities is slightly different because they have revenue. So theirs has the revenue by activity, the expenditures by activity, and then the participation average over the last two years. So that one's a little bit different, but otherwise, they, they mostly all have the same structure where there's a summary, the details available, and then the detail of staffing.
And for, let's say, elementary, would they be receiving the teacher-student ratio numbers?
Yep, so we have the, the class size calculation in there that we use to estimate class sizes and see what that does to the totals and the averages as well.
Okay, so it'll be, so you'll, you'll be there furnishing that part of the information?
It's all in the spreadsheet. So there's, we have administrators that will kind of facilitate each because I can't be in five places at once. And so all of it's in the, in the sheet that they'll have access to and I'll be kind of floating between rooms and available to help and answer questions as needed.
Okay, and then within the forecasting?
Yep.
I know, so the birth rate, you know, has dropped, dropped severely in the past, I think it was six years that was in the report. Do we, so then I noticed that the rates, we have up to 2021. Do we have the rates also for '22, '23, and '24?
The birth rates? Yes. Yes. So the analysis for, when I said the last six years, I think that was through this year's kindergarten class. I'd have to go back and look exactly how I did my math. But we do have what the birth rates are up through '23, I think, for sure.
Okay. And then I have a question for Dr. Hillman. So I noticed also within the priority-based budget reduction update, the one dated February 10th, so the most recent, it stated under declining enrollment, the district continues to come out ahead in open enrollment. So 49 non-resident students coming in. But then I have 867 students going out to other schools. So how is that coming out ahead in open enrollment?
So when we talk about open enrollment, remember, open enrollment has a very specific definition. That is traditional school district to traditional school district. So when we look at that traditional public school exchange, open enrollment, when we look at the numbers of non-resident students who are enrolling in a traditional public school elsewhere, that number is 292. And we look at the students from, who are residents of other traditional public schools enrolling in Norfield, that's 489. So when we look at that traditional open enrollment, that is where we are a winner, right? The two charter schools, obviously, many of those students are Norfield students. That's not open enrollment, right? That is the ability for students to, that's the public school choice portion. The other places that students may go that you're referencing in that 800 number would be homeschool, which we have seen an increase in since the pandemic. It's leveled off, but we saw an increase after the pandemic or during the pandemic, and then that leveled off. We have seen, I'd have to go back and look at the overall numbers for private school, but the most significant private school that we would see within our community is St. Dominic. And we know that their numbers have dropped. We have seen an increase, to a certain extent, in online charter schools. So not just traditional charter schools, but online charter schools. Of course, we have an online option partnership with Owatonna Online. So what I'm speaking about, when I'm talking about open enrollment, is that traditional public school district to public school district open enrollment.
Okay. But the 867 students going out, we would otherwise be entitled to that revenue, correct?
If they were choose to be here, yes.
Eight sixty-seven? Okay. And so that would equal somewhere around 10 million, over 10 million a year?
I would have to do the math. But I trust your math, so.
Yeah, if we're using, you know, around $10,000.
$10,000 a student, yes.
It would be almost 10 million per year. Okay, thank you.
Follow back up about the birth rates. I pulled it up just so I had it. So I did from 2015 to 2019, nope, 2020, which is our current projected year. So in 2015, it was 734. 2020, 643. 2021 is 656. 2022 is 679. And 2023 is 647. And so we had over 700 through 2019. And now it's been in the 600s those remaining four years. Yep.
Amy, did you have a question also?
So I know that officially, the form has been taken down for people who want to join the committees. And I'm just wondering if there's someone who's still out there who thought they were going to join but didn't join, if there's any chance that they could still be slotted in somewhere? Or whether the committees have started and it's too late?
So we did close the form on February 3rd. We had a number, what Kelly did is she put on the closed form that if people were still interested, that they could email her. And so we have had 10 people sign up after that. So they begin tomorrow night, Amy. So if someone was interested in joining, we could still accommodate them.
Anyone else question or comment? This time. Ben, did you have a question?
Sorry, just a quick comment. You know, I just wanted to thank Dr. Hillman and Val for setting up or working to set up these processes from community feedback standpoint. The last time, we had to do this several years ago. To your point, Maggie, you know, this really does inform the process, or at least for me, from a board standpoint, to hear from the community in terms of, you know, where they see value. And obviously, we're going to head into a cycle that's going to be difficult from a budget reduction standpoint. So having the communities be part of that process is really important. And do want to thank people that have stepped forward to do that. I think we're going to have some tough conversations over the next few months, but it's a good start. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item E at this time, and that is our legislative session update. And Dr. Hillman will share the 2025 Minnesota Legislature Session and the Minnesota School Boards Association and Minnesota Association of School Administrators platform.
Yes, so I've included both the MASA and MSBA legislative platforms in the packet. What we know is that the House of Representatives was gavelled to order last Thursday after a power-sharing agreement was reached. And Speaker Damuth will hold the speakership for the next biennium. And then we know that there, once the, it is likely, once the one-house race in Roseville is resolved, that we'll be back to a tie, and there'll be a power-sharing agreement there in the House. So now the budget work really gets underway. The next biggest piece in the budget development will be the February forecast. That's what is slated to be released that first week in March. That will really give the governor and the budget developers in the House and Senate what those targets are. We are not as hopeful this time around as we have been in the past just because of some of the forecasts that we're seeing for some of the future biennia. Our Legislative Action Committee has now met, I believe, three times. Claudia is part of that. We meet every other Saturday morning from 9:00 to 9:45. We help community members learn how to advocate. We help them learn about what Minnesota's structure is. We're really grateful for those community members who show up. So we'll be working through, again, advocating for things like a 3% increase to the basic formula. We'll be asking for additional relief on the special education cross subsidy. Those are really the two main things that we'll be focusing on. But it's really getting started, and we'll make sure that we keep it in front of you as time goes along. We just wanted to make sure that you had the two legislative platforms and that you are certainly welcome. On March 10th is the MASA, MSBA Day at the Capitol. So many board members have participated in this in the past. If you have an interest in joining us that day, just go ahead and let Kelly know, and we'll work on getting us registered for that event in St. Paul. It's really a great day. MSBA has a little bit of a training session first. Then we start, we set up meetings with various local legislatures. And we have an opportunity to sit and talk with them about what our story is and what we're seeking them to accomplish in the legislative session. So we just learned this week, MSBA/MASA Legislative Day at the Capitol is Monday, March 10th.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. Dr. Hillman, I do have a few questions on those legislative priorities upcoming that we hopefully can advocate for. One, I can tie into what we're about to go through with our budget reduction. The local school board authority modifying or repealing existing unfunded mandates is probably a hot topic. And can you just talk about which unfunded mandates maybe that this particular document is referring to?
Yes, so I think there's several that they're referring to. I think, number one, I think they're looking at the summer unemployment insurance for hourly workers. That's the one that we said has been paid for. There was one-time money that paid for that for the last couple of years. That's going to be running out if it hasn't run out already. We paid two, we would have paid $217,000 for that program last summer. And so that's one example. The paid family medical leave, that's another example. The payroll tax that is scheduled to be a 0.88% payroll tax. Employers are required to pick up at least 50% of that. So that's 0.44% for us as an employer. That's that $174,000 range. Those are two of the big ones. Some other districts really, or some, this would also refer to the employee sick and safe time, which was something that was implemented this past fall. There was just an article in the Star Tribune this past weekend about that, just about some of the challenges that school districts face with employee safe and sick time. And so that's another requirement that I believe this is referring to. They're also talking about special education cross subsidy. They're also talking about things like, while we have been successful in implementing the training associated with the REED Act, it has been a struggle for many other districts. And so whether it was finding the time for the training, some districts actually ended up having to cancel student days to be able to accommodate the training. Some looked at paying people outside of the contract date to be able to do that. So there's been some questions, not about the validity of the REED Act. People really like it. They are just asking for some relief on some of the training requirements and asking for additional money to support it. So those would be a handful of the different mandates that I would share as examples of that.
And then do you also, do you happen to know a little bit more about the broadening definition of instructional hours?
So you are looking at the MSBA one?
Yes, the policy priorities for 2025.
Just want to make sure I know exactly which, okay, yep. Yes, so my understanding of this particular one would be that this would relieve from some of the state requirements for graduation requirements and open it up for additional elective kinds of credits to be used for that. This is part of another, one of the other pieces that they look at, and this is seat time, right? The requirement of how long does a student need to be in a class to be able to earn credit, things like that? So it's really about trying to create flexibility in what is required for students to take, right? Allowing that to be more locally determined. And then how much time they need to be in a classroom to be able to earn that credit.
So would that, would this policy passing allow for that work-based learning, more of the work-based learning credits to be applied?
Theoretically, depending on how the relief was provided. That is what the intent would be. That would be one of the intents of the people advocating for this.
Okay. And then the final, my final question is in the stabilized workforce section. Would this pertain all within the PELSB licensing system, the way that that's set up?
So I'm thinking if there's any other examples, I would agree with you. I think it really is related to positions that are governed by the Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board. So really what I, they are looking at there is teaching license, right? So by way of example, there's continued move to asking for a broad science license, right? So if I have a mathematics license, I can teach everything from algebra to calculus, right, with one license. If I'm a social studies license, I can teach civics, I can teach geography, I can teach government politics with one license. Science requires individualized licenses for individualized subjects, life science, chemistry, physics, et cetera. So that would be one example. And then again, working to make sure that they're streamlining some of those licensing requirements for people to be able to get more people into the workforce. So that's one example of the kind of licensing requirements we're talking about.
Thank you.
Good questions, everyone. Any other comments or questions at this time? All right, then we will move on to item F, which is the Policy Committee's Recommendations. Dr. Hillman will present the Policy Committee's Recommended Updates to Policies 406, 407, 408, 519, 614, and 701. This will be an item for individual action at our next board meeting.
Yes, so as I go through each policy very briefly, I'll just highlight the changes. So in public and private personnel data, you will see just some change to the purpose statement as we've been working on that. And there's limited other changes throughout the rest of this particular policy. But there are changes. If you go all the way to the end, there are some pieces, just in some of the statutory references, that we're going to take a look at there. So this is really, again, we have said that we would, if we are changing the purpose statement, we would bring that to you for your approval. That's 406. 407, this is really about the exposure to hazardous substances. Again, here what we've got is the alignment with the strategic plan, people in stewardship. You'll also see there's some cross-out of some statutory references. Just what happens is when, if they renumber something or they rename a statute, they have to make those cross-references align with it. We took it, look at, take a look at 408. The only change here is really the change in the purpose statement to our policy relating to subpoena of a school district employee. I'll take that back. There's also one legal reference change that was adapted. We take a look at 519. These are interviews of students by outside agencies, again, purpose statement. And then also in the general statement to policy, it really is giving greater ability or requirement for the principal to consult with the superintendent related to interviews of students by outside agencies. And then you'll also see there's some other things that have been part of statutory change. Or when MSBA, after they review and they come back and they do a first policy change, sometimes they'll come back and tweak this. You'll see there's one change under number three that really is around the sequence in which people can be interviewed. Another piece about adding the word assessing and investigating, just so that it's not just about an investigation, but it's about agencies who are also just assessing maltreatment. And so those are the changes in Policy 519. 614, this is the testing plan and procedure. Again, just the purpose statement is tweaked. Also want to point out that, well, one addition that we are suggesting as a district, this is not a statutory change, but if you go all the way to the end, there's a part about retaliation. And as we have looked at that section, just basically saying that people, we cannot retaliate against people who have disclosed a technical disruption or test security concern. So if someone has concern about test security, that they would not, there'd be no retaliation for that kind of report to the department. There are a couple of different pieces around some cross-references as well. That is Policy 614. 701, the budget, in terms of that. This particular change really came from another school district's board had a debate about whether or not it was allowable to be able to use fund balance to cover a deficit budget. And so the School Boards Association got involved in this discussion and determined it was just simplest to make a recommendation to change the policy, to make it explicit that, yes, you can use, it stands to reason. I think, you know, lots of people have done this over time. There had been a question that it had come to MSBA. They thought it was wise to clarify it. So I talked to Dr. Morrow from MSBA about that. So that's really the only change in 701. So those are the policies for consideration this evening. There is no vote tonight. Those will be asked to be voted on at the next meeting.
Good, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Okay, very good. Item G is our construction update. It's number five, and also a change order procedure for the high school project. And this will be an item for individual action at our February 24th board meeting.
Yes, so just the review, the core planning team met on January 29th. The next meeting is February 19th. Core planning team members have been awesome at really just digging into, they're getting into writing those criteria for design. It's very exciting. It's also very challenging, but they're doing really great work. The activities subcommittees, first meeting will be on February 26th. The core of what I want to just have board members reflect upon tonight is as we are quite a distance yet from construction, it is good to have procedures set up ahead of time. And so working with Wold and Knutson, when we did the 2018 projects, we had a similar system set up for approving change orders. Now, of course, our goal would be to never have a change order, right? That you write great criteria, rate bid documents, the drawings are all very clear. But with this size of project, that might be being polyannish. We will likely have some change orders, though we want to minimize them. When we have a change order, it can delay construction, right? It can increase costs. And so what we want to do is we want to have a procedure to be able to handle that. So what you'll see is that we are proposing three different levels, administrative authority of less than $100,000. And that would mean that if the change order is recommended, that Val, myself, and Justin, if we all agree, we would be able to approve that change order. Anything between $100 and $175,000, we would bring that to the project oversight committee. And that would be Ben, Claudia, and Corey, who represent the board on that, as well as administrators and also representatives from Knutson and Wold. And finally, anything more than $175,000 would be asked for the full board to approve. So again, something similar to what we had the last time. We would like to have a process and procedure to govern it. And we ask you to consider this. We'd love to take any feedback that you have. But we ask you to approve this at the next meeting.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comment? Okay, Amy?
A bit. Did you have any really high-dollar change orders with the elementary school projects?
And ask Val to help me remember. I don't recall, the one that I do recall was the groundwork, the groundwork at.
Yep. They had to bring in.
Fill, additional fill.
Additional fill and sand when they were doing the. Additional fill and sand when they were doing the site work because it was not, I'm not even going to guess what the terminology was, but that was, that's the most significant one that I can recall off the top of my head. But I want to say even that was less than 100,000. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we're on to item six, which is our consent agenda. And as a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? By Jenny, second by Ben? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And then our next item is items for individual action. And we have two items. One of them is a resolution. So our first item is a resolution requiring administration to make recommendations regarding programming and staffing for the next year. And a copy of the resolution is part of this packet, which is published and available on the district website. The board passes this resolution at this time each year to allow the process to begin regarding making changes in the budget. And the resolution must be in place in the event that staff positions are discontinued. I move to authorize the administration to make recommendations for additions and reductions in programs and for adding or discontinuing positions. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, by Maggie, thank you. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Okay, Kelly, will you help facilitate a roll call vote?
Butler?
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
Gorowitz?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Elson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Our next item is, we have the proposed 2025-2026 school year calendar, which was presented at our last meeting. Is there a move to approve the proposed 25-26 school year calendar? Move by Cory, second?
Second.
Second by Ben, thank you. Is there any discussion on the calendar? None, all right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, all, motion passes, thank you. Next is items for information. We have an enrollment report, and so Superintendent Hillman will review the February enrollment report.
Waiting for it to come up on the screen here. Maybe Tim can help me out. All right, well, we'll just go, we'll just give the oral report here tonight. So what you'll see is month over month, you'll see that last month we had a total of 308087. This month, we have a total of 3881. Not uncommon at the end of the first semester to see some of that change. And so then if you take a look at the second page of the report, what we're committed to is showing those class sizes, especially at the elementary level. Those largely remain unchanged. So minimal change from last month, but slightly less than our report in January. So be happy to answer any questions that I'm able to at this time.
Questions or comments for Dr. Hillman on the enrollment report? Okay, Jenny?
I was just looking on the ALC breakdown from full-time, part-time, and then independent study areas. And, or maybe this is a question for Val. But do we receive the same revenue per student for the part-time and independent study students?
No, so part-time, so the revenue we get is based on their average daily membership. So part-time means that they're not coming full-time. It might be two class periods a day, and so they're considered prorated, basically. Independent study is different because they're earning, they can earn up to 0.2 additional ADM over like if they were here full-time at 1.0, they can earn up to an extra 0.2. And so that is typically kind of catching up on credit. They're using the independent study to kind of catch up, if that makes sense. And so that can be extra. And so that depends on their hours that they participate in that program, which is different than their seat-based calculation for the, like, during the day class. So I don't know if that answered your question or muddied the waters, but they're not exactly the same calculation.
So is there a percentage? Or what would the formula be then compared to the full-time?
So part-time would likely just be prorated based on how much they're attending. So if it's two class periods instead of seven, you know, whatever that percentage would be, I think would be a rough calculation. The independent study is hours-based, and I don't have that calculation off the top of my head. But it's capped at a certain number of hours, whatever the 0.2 calculates out to. So if we take, I'm not going to do the math in my head because that is dangerous place to be, but if you took the total hours in our school year and broke it out into like a per day and whatever 0.2 of that is the cap that they can have extra. And so if it's an hour a week that they're doing independent study at night or whatever the case might be.
And that's in addition to the revenue that we're getting for them in other classes, for their regular full-time equivalents.
Yep, they can do up to an extra 0.2.
And those students are enrolled at the ALC only? Or are some of those students enrolled at the high school?
So actually, I would say the majority are probably at the high school. They're.
Majority of the independent study or the part-time?
The independent study, possibly the part-time. I'm not 100% sure about that, but the independent study hours is a lot of the credit recovery, which happens both at the high school and the ALC. And there's, I know there's bigger numbers at the high school. But the, that model happens because we have the ALC. And so that's why the hours have to get shown under the ALC instead of the high school.
Oh, I see, but they, but they may not actually be at the ALC at all.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? General comment? Thank you. Thank you for the enrollment report. Okay, item nine is our future meetings, and those are Monday, February 24th, 6:00 PM, regular meeting here in this boardroom. Monday, March 10th, 6:00 PM, also a regular board meeting. Monday, April 14th, 6:00 PM, another regular board meeting. All of those in this boardroom. And then item 10 is our adjournment. That's all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Move by Jeff, second. Amy, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.